Okay, call the meeting to order on January 8th of the Executive Board of the Supervisors. We have a quorum, we have three members here.
Nancy too.
Oh Nancy, no, we have four members here, so we're cool. So the first meeting, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of 11:20.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 11:20, 24.
Do I hear a second on the TV here?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Any further debate? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And then the second minutes on 12:30, the public hearing?
Correct.
Also to accept.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any debate? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 I see Nancy with her hand up. Okay. That's it on the agenda, what else you need? Was there anything else we had to deal with? Okay. Okay. Oh, before we adjourn. Okay. So we're standing at recess at the moment.
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
We call the Board Supervisors for the Solid Waste District to order. I'll wait till you sit down.
Can you hear me in there?
Yes, we can.
I don't hear you guys, you got the mic on?
Yep, we gotta put the mic on. Okay, we called the meeting to order, just so everybody knows what we just did.
Okay.
And we're now being-
There we go.
And then we're now being recorded.
Okay, now I can hear ya.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, first item on the agenda is approval for the minutes of 12:424. That's in your packet on page 7. Any deletions, additions, or a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion to accept and second. Any other debate? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. People at home, just raise your hand. And people that are on phones have to say something.
Beth said yes, Gabe said yes.
Yep. I want anybody saying no. Okay, all right.
Nancy said yes.
Yep. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approve the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan and the Budget Plan. That is on page 13.
Have we approved in the public notice, the public hearing prior to that?
We got-
Does that not get approved?
That was approved at your last meeting.
Yes. Oh, okay. And that's just for the minutes of the-
Okay.
That we approve.
So now we're talking about the budget?
We're now talking about the budget. We are now open for motions. We need to put a motion on the table first, then we get debate.
Motion to accept the budget.
Need a dollar amount.
No, I didn't. I'm still trying to find it.
I can't.
Where is it airing?
If you go to page-
Page?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-five.
Okay.
You want it in green, right? The first motion should be in green?
It's the numbers, it says it on page thirty-four, $2,689,522.
Okay. So we want to move that? Need a motion to move that number?
I'll make the motions.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second it.
Okay, now we're open for debate.
I have a question.
Question? Yes.
So, we'll go by the top numbers. Page twenty-three at the top. And page twenty-four at the top. On the top of page twenty-four, it says, "This price is still dramatically smaller than $1.55 per ton for a permitted residential user at our transfer station." So I had called Mark today and asked him if it was $1.55 per ton, and he said yes. But I think it's $1.50 per ton.
No, it should be $1.55.
But if you look at it online, it's $1.50.
That's an error. I'll update the form. It's been $1.55 for last year.
So we have been charging equal for the past year at $1.50, not at $1.55. That changes your budget.
Well, I'm aware that we're getting $1.55.
You think we're being charged when, you think that the bills go out for $1.55 per ton?
Going over the scale, yes.
This is for the scale?
Yeah.
Brianna, who does that, who does that work? How would we find out if they were being charged $1.50 or $1.55? Do you know?
Um, as far as I know, it's been at $1.50. That's what we advertise and everything, so.
Is it on the website, is $1.50?
Hmm.
As far as I know.
Was it, I believe it went up $5.
It used to be $1.45, and then they made a motion like a few months ago and changed it.
I stand corrected. Okay, yeah.
To $1.50. It went up $5.
I knew it went up $5, so I stand corrected.
Susan, where are you seeing these numbers you're talking about?
On the top of page twenty-four.
Top of page twenty-four.
I'm on page twenty-four.
Okay, go to the very, very top.
The first sentence above the table.
Above the table.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Not in the table itself.
Right, right.
So it's $1.50. Thank you.
But the other thing that bothers me on page twenty-three is when, and I broke this up at our meeting, why we're comparing our charges to the Casella cost. From ours to the Casella cost. We keep saying that we're the cheapest per ton. But yet, since 2020 to '24, we've lost $1.5 million in tonnage at Gleason Road. So if we're so cheap, why did we lose 10,000 tons in four years at the Rutland County Solid Waste on Gleason Road? And yet, we have to go up on our prices? It just, it doesn't make sense to me. Usually, if you're the cheapest of something, like when there's a sale at the supermarket, or Aldi's always has good prices, people go there. So I still can't understand why we're going up from 22.47, I believe, to 25, if we've lost so much tonnage over the past four years. So that's my comment for this budget that I'm going to vote against.
Any comment?
I could, I could comment on it.
You may.
Okay. This, I'm not sure about where you got the tonnage. I'm just getting hit with that number right now.
Well, maybe we can look it up. It should be available, right?
Well, I can find out for you and tell you when I find out about it. But I think it's, to drop it on me like this is just not sincere. To get a true answer.
I think you've been told that the tonnage has dropped. This isn't a surprise to you. We've talked about it at previous meetings.
Let me answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. What this goes into is the budget of plan. It goes into environmental conditions, and how the market situation is, how our competitors are going, how markets are going up or down and so forth. It is prefaced by that, and it gives you pie charts, it gives you bar charts to show trends and so forth like that. And it talks about processing costs. It talks about our costs, as it goes into HHW, in their cost per participant, and how that price is going up. Forevermore. And it goes into an analysis of the market. What is the usual cost for items? Say if you're going to buy a car, you want to find out what everyone's charging. So we got to find out what is the cost of this product? And why are we undercutting ourselves? And through an expanded analysis, I was able to find out what other districts are doing. And by far, we're getting the less revenue out of any other district similar to our size and what we do. So I think that answers the question, why are we going up?
So if I can answer what you just said, you called other districts.
This is the chart.
I have it on page twenty-three.
The chart is on page twenty-three.
Yeah.
Comparing districts to districts.
This has been, this has been before you since November.
So if we've called other districts, why at the next chart down below, when it says Casella cost, Rutland County Solid Waste District surcharge, why are we compared to Casella and not to Addison, or Rutland, or Hubbard's? Hubbard's, it's local.
And then I would-
Why don't we have someone else? We asked that at one of our meetings.
In X, X, X.
That always shows the comparison of what Casella has gone up over the last five years, and what we've gone up over the last five years.
Casella is-
Casella has jumped their rate-
It's not apples to apples.
One at a time. Go ahead. Chuck.
You can see Casella has jumped their rate $18 from 22 to 25. And we've dumped that, we've raised ours $5 from $19 to $25, we're going up. And that's what, that's what that chart compares. It's not trying to compare other ones. It's just showing you what Casella raised theirs, and what we've raised ours, and what the comparison is.
I believe that chart is in, those are the costs that Casella charges us.
That's right.
So that's, so the two charts are-
For hauling, correct?
What do you mean, that's what Casella charges us for hauling?
That's what they charge us to haul up to-
Where? The 1875?
The 10301.
The 10301.
Per ton.
So that's, that's our what? That's what Casella charges us to transport the waste product at the tipping pad up to their facility in Cumberland?
Coventry.
Coventry? Coventry?
This shows you that costs are going up. And I did it to one of our-
Well, we don't have a-
Customers.
A contract for that, because it ran out in '21, right?
Well, let me answer your question. The question is, this is another example of how I'm showing cost arising, and how it directly impacts the district.
Absolutely.
To justify an increase.
Absolutely.
And there's three different, strong, strong correlations to why this should be done.
Absolutely. And that's why I brought up the Addison County to you about how they didn't want to pay the prices that they were paying. So they put it out to bid, and they found somebody to do their transportation for less. And Bill told me to prove it, that's why I went up there. And then you spoke to Terry and Don when you went up there, and it was proven. So my, my philosophy is nobody has, has tried to look for, nobody has put anything out to bid. Nobody has looked into finding less expensive ways to do things. They just keep doing the same old thing, all the time. We don't even have a contract. I mean, how long do you run out of a contract before you do anything about it? It just seems like, if you want to talk, it's very, very frustrating. Not, I don't think that's good management and organization. That's just my feeling.
Any other?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I don't think we should assume that the reduction in tonnage is directly related to the fees. There may be another reason, so I don't think that is necessarily certain.
I totally agree.
And also, we, I'm not done. The Addison County District was mentioned at one of our meetings as being unusually organized and clean and well-kept. And I wonder if there's any connection between the surcharge of $35 a ton, which is $10 more than the raised, the new rate that we have here at Rutland. You know, it costs money to keep things neat and clean and fixed up. And they may have other things that are cheaper at Addison, but obviously, the surcharge is not inexpensive. So anyway, those are my two, two thoughts. I totally support raising the fee to $25 a ton to keep ourselves solvent.
And I totally agree with you, Nancy. Especially about, when you talk about how Addison is nice and neat and clean, and maybe that's where the money goes to helping to keep it like that. If you've been to the Gleason Road, you are far from nice and neat and clean. That is the same, or worse, as it was 46 years ago when it first opened.
I hate to disagree with you. That's not true.
To fix that up, and I-
That is not true.
People working are so pleasant.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'll just say we have a point. So let's not talk too much about what it looks like, and look forward to fixing it up in the coming years. And the people working there, I've found, are very helpful and pleasant.
They certainly are.
Yeah, so.
I have no problems with the people that work there, or here.
Okay, any other issues?
I have a comment.
Comment, yes, sir.
It's similar to the one that was just on TV. You know, I think I send less trash to the, to the transfer station.
And I, with you, I'm also doing that.
Than I, as a Joe Average consumer.
Right.
And, you know, I recycle a lot more.
That's right.
And so, that's a good thing. If that's true across the board, that people are recycling more and putting less into the waste stream.
And I agree with you 100%, because mine, I have Casella pick mine up in my home. I'm only doing half a tote compared with what used to be full. And my recycles are fuller, okay? And I'm composting my garbage in my backyard for my wife's garden. So I'm pulling that out of the stream. Yeah, we are going to have lower tonnage, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. That's what the state wants us to do.
That's a good thing, not a bad thing.
Right.
That is, like, that is our mission, what we're supposed to be doing.
Someone say something there?
Gabe, I don't think we came over too well.
Gabe didn't come over very well.
I would just agree with you that that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, we're supposed to reduce, yes.
And that means we're doing it, and things are working properly.
Some people-
But it also means that that's why we have to keep our rates going up. Absolutely.
Any other questions on the numbers? Line items?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding the page 22, HHW customers. It shows a pretty dramatic drop-off after 2019. And, you know, obviously, COVID happened there, but it didn't actually ever recover. Do you have any insight on why that amount of customers basically have in a single year?
I think COVID did, as you can surmise, had some kind of effect on this curve. And as, as we get into 2021, it spikes, and it's continuing on the same trajectory into '22. And then it kind of levels out. I think, I think a lot of, what I'm hearing through other districts is that we've been doing this for a long time. And a lot of the people that have had this stuff stored for the last 10 years have finally got rid of it. And we're just getting new people that come by and do this. But it's still very high. It's very high, cost-wise. And that's why they're doing the new program, hopefully through one of the statutes, where we're going to have the manufacturers or the brands pay for this stuff, and take this off the burden of the districts and the consumer, EPR. So right now, we're seeing some leveling out of this curve in the trajectory, which is probably a good thing, but it's still very high. And I'm thinking that the organizations that are going to take this over, maybe they're, they're thinking that they're going to, their costs are going to be less. I doubt it. But for, for all the, all these chemicals and operating costs to do this, plus the cost for these clean harbors or N-Pro to come and pick it up, those costs are dramatically going up, much higher than the rate of inflation, to add to the cost of our operation. So, I hope that answered it?
So you're saying we're getting out, potentially getting out of the HHW business?
No, we're not getting out of it. We're still going to have to operate, it's just that the cost is going to be shifted from us to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
I don't hear any noes.
No.
No, one no.
Mine's a no, too.
So two noes. Motion carries.
Then we have a MRF budget.
Okay, we got new MRF budgets, our next, which is on page 35. I need a motion to accept that budget.
$88,239.
Do I have a motion to move that?
I'll move.
Hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any debate, any questions?
I'm so confused on how we come up with all of this. Like, okay, so we're going under FY 2025 budget.
Which starts July 1st, for fiscal year? Start, where fiscal year?
With calendar year.
Right.
Calendar, yeah.
So MRF revenues, $88,239. So we got the lease. We got the interest revenue. And other financing source. What does other financing source mean?
Transfer from the general fund over to the MRF. It's basically just, it nets out to zero. It's an expense-
Just to make it a balanced budget?
Sort of, I mean, it's basically-
So the general fund can go back and forth?
Yeah.
MRF.
It's to cover MRF expenses from the general fund for insurance and whatnot. But it nets out to zero. It's an expense for the general fund, or expense for the general fund and income from the MRF. So it's just a net zero transaction.
Part of the insurance premium is in there for the building, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we actually paying insurance?
We have been, but that's part of the project that we've been dealing with to get reimbursed from Casella, based on the contract, lease contract. According to that contract, Casella is supposed to be covering their insurance expense on the building.
So according to that contract, actually, our numbers would be different because of utilities, insurance?
It would change this.
And even everything around the building outside?
It would change this, yes.
So this is numbers for what we thought we were supposed to be doing?
I didn't make the budget, I don't-
Right. So this is the numbers for what we thought it was, but it's not the correct?
This budget is based on the information I know today. We know today.
Right, it's not some, it's not based on the budget that you knew in 2021. Have a new contract.
True.
Any other questions? How about if you're at home?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that prop and liability line. Is that entirely for the insurance that we've been paying for? Or is that cover other expenses?
Profit liability is insurance, yeah.
Property liabilities, insurance.
Yeah, but solely insurance.
Yeah.
Because we're the owners of the building, we have to deal with that, but then they reimburse us.
They should have insurance also.
Huh?
They should have insurance.
Oh, they have insurance too. Leasehold insurance, I'm pretty sure they do with all that equipment in there. If not, I need a motion. Where we have the motion on the table? All in favor say aye.
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 Any ayes?
Nay.
Nay, here too.
Two nays.
Motion capital budget.
Huh?
Capital Improvement Plan?
Where is it? Is that on page?
Page 17. You see $285,000.
I think we should have done that first, but we did. Page 17. The capital budget for 25, 2025 is $285,000. Do I have a motion to accept that?
I move accept the capital budget as written, $285,000.
I'll second it.
Okay, any debate? Any questions?
I have some questions. So for this budget, we have the cat, we have the wheeler loader in there. We got the hazardous waste facility. Is that for building a new facility?
Yeah, we're trying to save money to get there, yeah.
Oh, that's for saving money there, so we don't have-
So the, the capital, the, the front-end loader, that's money we're putting aside to purchase it down the road.
Right.
So we're putting so much in a year.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing to the transfer station also. And then the scale house, I think that is to do a project this year?
That's right.
Thirty-five.
So thirty-five is added to $1.50 from last year to do the, transfer the scale to the other side. Scale house.
So what we're doing, we're putting money aside every year to get to these projects, so we don't have to do any bonding when we get there.
Mm-hmm. Because we have to pay our, whatever we take out in one year, right? If we take out a loan, we have to have it paid off in one year, is that what I was told, right? Okay. So I'm just curious, when we think about the Gleason Road, like, being that we know we have a six-inch water line up there, and being that we know we want to move the scale house, and being that even though the storm drain was done not too long ago, and we're going to, and we're going to be working on that again. My feeling is, I don't want to do, I don't want to do something and then have to dig it up again. So I was wondering, can we put everything together so that we're doing everything at once? Like, put in the water and sewer, move the scale house, you know, even pave that road? I mean, I don't think any of this has ever been, like, sat down and talked about, like, even as a committee for the Gleason Road, you know, I don't know what you want to call it. I'm thinking beautify committee, but that's not it. It's to make it more functionable, and even to get out of this building and put an office up there.
Are, are these questions about the changing the values in any of this chart? Because right now, we're discussing the chart. I'm not-
That's correct.
Sounds like this is-
Yeah, so, so what I'm wondering is, where it says recycling-
Which line item do you want to team? Or are you fine with these line items, you just want to discuss the planning going forward? Because those are two different discussions.
Well, I just wonder how you get the money, how you get the 175?
It comes out of the budget. It's set aside, you put so much, each quarter, we put so much in that fund.
Each month.
Each month, oh, we're doing it 12 months, okay.
Yeah, divided by 12, so it helps us keep track of the budget better.
So the 175 will be for the year?
For the year, that's correct. And they break it up into 12 payments as revenue comes in.
Okay.
The only one that's going to be paid outright this year is the 35 to move the scale house itself to the other side of the scale.
Yeah, I guess that's part of my problem, is that we're going to spend money, and maybe we shouldn't be spending that until you have a plan to put, unless we're going to do the water and sewer at the same time, and get some running water up there finally. Because if we have a water line up there, then we should have running water and sewer. And so if you're going to move the scale house in that-
That's only, that's a portable unit, we move from one side to the other. It's going to be a roll-off, whatever we're going to do. We're not building it, we're buying it.
And it costs $35,000?
Well, it, I could comment on as a project in itself, to change the scale house to one side, to the other.
And part of this is technology, too.
And to have them, yeah, to have them do some stormwater surveys and see if we can get that fixed. The engineer is now working on this. The engineer is aware that there's a water line that's just outside the transfer station. And she's working on this to-
And she knows it's in the transfer station also?
She's got the plans from the city. And she's going to be coming up with some kind of gant shot to show her project management, and what's going to happen with the milestones as we develop into the completion. And then we get into construction. So that's going to be the next part of it, and hopefully, construction's going to be started in complete, it's going to be completed by October before the snow falls. That's my ultimate goal.
Of the scale house?
The whole, this whole project for-
In storm, in the storm drains?
In, yeah. We're going to see what that is. I don't, I haven't got that information yet, she's still working on it.
Okay.
But I did talk to her last week, and she's making progress. So at that point, when we get the information, we can make, we can make choices. So at that point, when we get the information, we can make, we can make choices and see what it is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other debate? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any ayes?
I'm gonna say no.
One no. Okay, that is the budget. Monthly financials, that's a separate document?
Does anybody have a question?
Question?
No, I just gotta, I gotta leave.
Who's that?
Clint.
Clint, okay. We still have a floor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Monthly financials are a supplement, unfortunately, we wasn't able to get it out in time to send it to the main board, but the first page is the MRF balance sheet with total assets of one million, three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Zero dollars in liabilities and total capital, one million, three hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Next page is the income statement for MRF. Total revenues are sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Total expenses are seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars and ninety-three cents for net income of sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, eighty-six cents. You might notice that some of the expense line items are in the negative, which means they're basically income at this point. That's because of the project to recoup expenses from Casella for the MRF, based on the lease contract, starting in September two thousand twenty-one. So that's why those expenses are kind of flipped, because that's what we're owed from, from Casella. Next page is the balance sheet for the general fund. Total assets are nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars, eighty-eight cents. Next page, total liabilities of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, which gives us capital, net capital of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Moving on to the next page is the income statement for the general fund. Revenues as of November thirtieth are two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And we flip ahead two more pages, total expense of two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eight cents, which gives us expenses over revenue of six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-one cents, as of November thirtieth. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, on your statement of what page is this, there's no page numbers. You have a line item here, grants and administration. What, in twenty-three we had ninety, ninety-eight thousand? And then we had thirty-five this year, that makes it sixty-two. Is there a reason why it's down? Are we getting less grants, or are we still have money outstanding?
That would most likely be because we are, don't have as much in grants coming in. We probably had some reimbursements in two thousand twenty-three that we don't have this year.
Okay, all right, just, it was just a big number, I just want, no.
Yeah, and it's also, I mean, there's also grants for HHW.
Oh, you're down here, I see, yeah.
So it's probably got categorized differently.
Yep, yep, gotcha.
We received that money from the MRF grant also back in November.
Okay.
What grants did we receive?
It was the grant that we received for the stormwater project that.
Thirty-three thousand?
Yeah. That covers the engineering and the licensing.
From the state.
The permitting, yep.
Do we apply for grants on a regular basis?
We try as much as we can. We try as much as we can. Right now, it's, 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 the, the, the big stuff is going for, for vehicles and trucks to go to electrical fill, electric, sorry, electric vehicles and so forth like that. Another one just came in today, and we don't have vehicles that we're gonna want to make electrified. We have a pretty new vehicle right now for hazardous waste, and that was purchased in collaboration with a grant from the state. We do have a yellow twenty-six-foot box truck that is some, we used to bring the recyclables over in the Gaylords, and we used to bring the tin over from the Gaylord, so we used to do the pulls. We still do the pulls for the, the metal. So that's, that's like, once every two weeks.
What do you mean by we do the pulls for the metal?
You take the material from the transfer station, put it in the truck, and you bring it somewhere, that's a pull.
What metals, though? Because we use earth waste.
Like the cans, the tin cans.
Tin cans and stuff like that, yeah.
Isn't, aren't the tin cans supposed to go to earth waste?
No.
That's not metal?
No, we've been bringing it here.
Metals, the metal is a big pile.
Practice is we bring it here.
Okay.
That's part of the recycling process.
That's right.
And then we make, we make money on that?
Yes, yes, that's, that's, that's good.
So being that we have in that budget that we just voted for hazardous waste facility, are we applying for grants for building that? For, you know, there must be green grants out there too, to make it, you know, energy efficient and things like that? Are we constantly looking at all of this?
Lieutenant, your team, I'm sorry to interrupt, is there a quorum to, to, if I, if I exit? Does that get enough to drive me through?
Yeah, we're still fine.
Okay, yes, he says yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Drive safe, or you're already home.
Thanks.
Yeah. You better be.
I'll go as well, that's part of why I gotta go.
Okay.
He's gonna treat the end of it. I, I just wanna, like, I know that, I know that it's, I know that there's a lot of grants out there, but you have to keep working on it constantly.
Okay. Is that it on the financial report?
That's it.
I said a quick question.
Do we need a motion to accept these?
Ethan just had a quick question.
This information only?
That's it.
We have a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
So we have showing negative forty-seven thousand in the proppant liability on the MRF income statement. Are we expecting to recoup all of the insurance costs since two thousand twenty-one? Or is that just?
I would assume so, because that's the language that's in the contract, but I can't say for certain. I haven't heard one way or the other from Guile yet. Mark's talked to him, I think, that's what I think, they were pretty positive on it, so.
Greg's in the process of presenting an invoice that's consistent with, with the lease agreement, and we'll have that conversation at that point.
Is there any timeline on when that invoice is expected to be issued?
Well, you know, we've been, I've been talking with Guile about it, so, you know, we've got the numbers put together finally, so, you know, very soon.
Done before next month?
For sure, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
An off-the-wall question.
Yes.
So, does Casella own this building?
No, we do, the solid waste district owns the building.
And the one over there too, the whole?
Yeah, yeah, the whole thing, including the outbuildings, the fencing that goes around it, the driveway, the whole nine yards. They leased that part over there.
Yeah.
And they get the use to use the driveway to bring trucks in and out, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, manager's report. We're a little behind, so.
Okay, item number one, if you haven't heard about Act one seventy-one, you're probably not part of a board belonging to the city, town, or chartered village. There was discussion about.
On page thirty-seven.
Yeah, page thirty-seven. Should the district, is the district required to be part of this process? And the answer is no, just like in school districts, school districts weren't part of the legislative process, so they got exempt, and according to the statute also, we're not part of this. However, the person at the Ethics Board of Commission, Ethics Commission Board, suggested that it'd be a good idea if we take what's out there and try to incorporate it into our policies. So what I, what I did is I gave you those recommendations that the Ethics Commission states in the statute thirty-eight and thirty-nine, and forty, and I also gave the current conflict of interest policy. Do you want me, I'm asking the board, would you want me to take a look at this, let's see what we can incorporate and bring that to you at your next meeting?
So why don't we send this to the E-Board and have them deal with it?
Okay.
And, and do a report back to the full Board of Supervisors? A motion would be in order to do that, to take these two issues and send it to them, have them hash it out and bring it back to us.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to refer the current conflict of interest policy and review how it aligns or unaligns with the proposed Vermont. I'd be interested in hearing the results.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, Bill.
Okay. Any debate? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 It looks like, are there any ayes?
No.
No, so okay, motion carries. Number two, compost vendor.
We, we have a new compost vendor, and this vendor started.
Excuse me, Mark, just so people at home know what we're doing, page thirty-seven is what he's working on.
Yeah.
In the packet. Go ahead.
We have a new compost vendor, that they, they, after talking to this vendor, this vendor is gonna give us expanded services, such as, like the items that they cover and the way they process our containers, they're gonna clean them and all that stuff, in a lower price. So this program is, I'm hoping, gonna be a little less expense, and that's reflected in that budget line also. At the end of the, at the end of the, the last page here, you'll see some of the things that they do accept and some of the things they do not accept. This is, this is a few more yeses than, I think there's two or three more yeses on this than currently.
Oh, they take meat and bones, everything?
So.
Oh. And this is taken from the transfer station?
Correct, through our compost program.
Interesting.
And we can keep them in the plastic bags?
That's correct.
With the forty-five gallon.
That's correct, or the small little ones that we sell too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it costs.
Well, that's good to know, that's less that's going into the.
Trash.
Trash. Okay, most of the stuff is compost, but.
Less trash is good.
Oils, fats, cheese, and meat, bones are not.
Yeah.
And I believe we're saving four dollars per forty-five gallon drum?
Something like that.
The other thing I was wondering. Do we sell our, our yard waste, our yard brush and leaves, or would they be interested in buying that also?
That's already ongoing.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
We, we make it available for free.
Okay, but we have, okay.
To customers and residents.
For the leaves and the yard brush. What about our, our mulch that we grind, that we have to pay? Are they interested in maybe buying that too?
It's free.
Yeah, but are they interested, the composter, interested in buying it so that we can cover our cost of how much it costs us to grind it up, rather than losing money?
Yep.
What's the, yeah, we.
Yes, they're interested in it.
Oh, okay.
They took a look at it and they, they're interested in it.
Okay, so then we might not be getting a deficit in that anymore?
We'll see.
In the mulch?
We'll see. If we had to have all that mulch shipped to another vocation, that's, that's the expense, yeah, that's an expense that I would like to not have. That's more than the.
Speed will wheel and deal and get them to come pick it up. Okay.
Yeah.
That's it on that?
That's it on that. Item number three, and we got just a few more minutes. O'Brien, our accountant, covering, well, the, the account that we've had since the beginning of the district and up to those that are doing the two thousand two audit, I was able to talk to the managing partner on the third. He informed me that he has assigned one staff person, the person that's been doing it to just do this, they're not gonna have any other duties. But more, more recently, I talked to, I received communication saying that all the materials that are, they're interested in, they've received, and it's gonna go for technical review and partner review, and we'll have a draft really soon.
Number four?
That's it, number four, our new accountant, he, they came down here on eleven twenty-two, and I was with them for the whole day. Greg, Greg was there, we gave him a whole bunch of documents to get them started on our two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four audits. They're planning to have these things done well before the end of the year. Our next meeting is gonna be January twenty-ninth and January thirtieth, two days, is gonna be hunkering down here with Greg and I to, mostly Greg, to make sure that they have all those documents beforehand, there's a whole list of them. This, it's a lot of work to get all these documents sent to them, and then we're gonna be able to review what we sent on those two dates, and they're probably gonna ask us for more information.
So clarification?
Yeah.
O'Brien, Schorls, and Reynolds, they are doing our taxes, am I correct?
No, they, they've done the audits.
They do the audits.
For two thousand twenty-two.
So they're still doing the twenty-two?
That's correct.
This new group is doing twenty-three?
In twenty-four.
In twenty-four.
In twenty-five, maybe.
Just one quick question, Mark.
Yep.
This new group can't do the twenty-three or twenty-four audits until the twenty-two is, is completed.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. But they're gathering the documents, and they can do that.
Okay. That's it?
That's, that concludes, concludes my report.
Okay, public comment, two minutes. Anybody from the public out there? I don't see anybody out there, and I don't see anybody in here.
But I would like to make a comment. Well, really, I'd like to make an amendment, but I don't know if I can do that under public comment.
No, that's for the public.
Okay, should I go out the door and come back in?
What would you like?
I'm only kidding, Billy.
What would you like to say?
Well, I just want to, I just wanted, I think we need to make an amendment to the June fifth meetings, meeting minutes, because it's written on here that Larry Taggett was a, a member present, and he was not, he was a guest. And the other guest was Mr. Gilbert from Castleton, he's not even written down here. And then another person that was not present and is written as present is Carrie Covey. So I know this, the June meeting was approved, I was even one of the ones that approved it, but I was not here for the June meeting, but when I watched it on TV, I saw that Larry and Mr. Gilbert were given the plaque by you, and then they left, because they're, they were no longer on the board. And Carrie Covey was not here at all, she was at her niece's baseball game. So that.
Unfortunately.
Totally wrong.
Your motion is out of order, because we've already approved the minutes on the last meeting, am I correct, or the September?
You can make an amendment to it.
No, you gotta, not, not after we approved them. It's my understanding from the attorney, once we approve the minutes, it's over, it's part of the record.
Well, why?
You have to fix those when we bring them up to approve, that's when you fix.
So why didn't you guys do that? You were at that meeting, right?
Wasn't aware of it.
How are you not aware of this? Are you not reading the minutes? Are you not reading what you get?
Yeah.
Then how could you see that it says members present, front page, top? You see Carrie Covey's name right here, was not even in the building. How do you not know that?
How would I not, well, how would I check?
Did you read this?
Excuse me, I'm speaking, please.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The point is, all right, you cannot go back and change the minutes, once they are approved by this group, you cannot go back and do that. No municipality unit can do that. Once they approve them, they are part of the record, and it stays the record.
Okay, so.
So there obviously was an.
I will believe you, I will believe you when I read that, because something else
I will believe you, I will believe you when I read that, because something else you told me at the last meeting, I asked you to send me information on, and you didn't, so I got in touch with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and I found out that you were not correct. So if we can't make an amendment to this.
On what issue?
On what issue?
Yeah.
On the evaluation.
On the evaluation?
Yes.
That's not pertaining here?
I know it's not, but you just asked me a question, so I answered it. So that's why I'm saying, I'll believe what you're saying now, but I want to read that what you're saying is the truth, because I can't believe that we can't amend this.
So you're calling, you're calling me a liar in the.
No, I'm not calling you a liar.
That's exactly what you're doing.